Hi Polly.
All set, okay.
Hi Polly.
Good evening, welcome to Thursday, December 6th, Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Before we get to opening comments, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to throw a couple of things in here. Number one, if we could have a moment, a moment of silence for President Bush 41. Thank you. Number two, before we get going, Pete Rogers, could you please talk to us?
For a change, I'm not up here to make trouble. Pete Rogers, 44 Pearl Road in Nahat.
Hey Pete, before you begin, you've never made trouble.
Okay.
You've never made trouble, in my book.
Alright.
You've been a great citizen, okay? And you're honest, and you really, really, you've been a great guy. I want to tell you that.
Thank you Richie. Couple of weeks ago, Flannery Brothers, they're a great outfit, came out and cleaned out the residue of 45 years of my artistic career. Stretched canvases, art material, furniture, a lot of started but unfinished paintings. It broke my heart, but it was a huge load off my mind. But, there's one thing that I've kept aside for nearly 30 years, intending to give it to this town, and it's a painting I've called "Aftermath", which is of the No Name Storm. We've all been up there in those big storms, at the height of them, there's nothing there but flying spray and Castle Rock being buried under green water. So, this is a time when the winds have died, but the seas are still high, and you can see it from the top of Castle Rock. It's a telescoped view, with the surf still beating on the other side of East Point, and off to your right, out of the picture, would be Canoe Beach. It's not the best of my paintings, but it's not the worst. But, I would be deeply honored if it could go in this building somewhere, because in this room, we've all experienced many great storms. But the people, like the ocean, soon want to seek equilibrium. And it's in that spirit that I would like to donate this to the Town in Nahat. It's too big for the library, it's too big for the Historical Society, and I would be deeply honored if you could find a place for it somewhere in this building, and if you can't, it won't be the first of my paintings to end up in a dumpster, so.
Thank you Pete, thank you. Peter, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Nahat, we thank you sincerely, and we will find a place for this. Beautiful painting Peter, thank you. Pete, I actually looked around, I found a perfect wall in my house while we're figuring out where to put it. It'll fit perfectly, my wife will kill me, but it'll be worth it. Opening comments?
I'm all set. Oh no, I have, no, I have one, I have one, I'm sorry. And I thought, Pat McGado came to me a week ago, and she had an idea of writing thank you notes to all the beautification committee.
Thank you.
And she wrote out these beautiful notes on historical society cards, and they were very well done, and I want to congratulate her. She asked me to sign them, and I was very pleased to sign them, and it was a way of saying thank you from the Board of Selectmen and Pat, to all the people that work diligently and make the town so beautiful, and the boat boxes, the islands, they do a great job, and I just want to thank Pat for doing that, because it's, it gave me another idea, we should be sending thank you notes out to the committees, the various committees that volunteer their time and effort to make this town run. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on one thing. As you all know, a very instrumental person from the town has moved, two of them, Mike Billius and Maja Billius. I just wanted to thank them for all the years of devotion they had to the town, and money they've raised for the town. They're on their way, I guess they're going to travel the country, they sold their home. And along with Mike, Frank Caddily needs a real thank you too, because between the both of those guys, they have raised probably around, over the years, close to $600,000 for this town. And that's really, it shocked me, but I just want you, they really need to be thanked for all the work, hard work that they have done. And again, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a letter, behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator, and the people of Nahat, thanking the individuals, as well as Frank Caddily and his wife, for raising all this money and funds, and they've been a great team. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
In animus? I'll forego my opening comments, except that I would like that painting in my house be. It's not happening, I know, but it's beautiful, it's just what we all want, and really, thank you so much.
I have a nice wall at my house, too, it's right on the.
My wall's bigger.
We'll make sure it's properly displayed.
Absolutely.
Believe me, within this confines.
Alright, next item, approve November 15th, 2018 meeting minutes.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of November 15th, 2018, in the executive session minute?
Not executive session.
No executive session, okay.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
No, they look good to me. Very extensive.
They're good. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, public meeting Tuesday, December 11th, at 7:00 PM Town Hall. Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Pete, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Oh, okay.
Polly Bradley, like to say something?
Oh Polly, you'd like to say something? In a minute, right after we do this, yes. Let's do the next thing, and then you get up, please, sure. The public meeting on Tuesday, December 11th, at 7:00 PM Town Hall. I'd like to clarify something for the whole town, that this is in fact a Selectmen's meeting. Evidently, it's all over the internet that is in fact a town meeting. It's a Selectmen's meeting in which Northeastern is going to present their plans so far. So would you handle the discussion on that, Mr. Town Administrator?
Sure. It is a Board of Selectmen meeting, it is, it's time, the Board of Selectmen, myself, have told Northeastern that it's time for them to present the plans that they've presented to us, to the public. I think another thing that I've heard a lot about is that, you know, the meetings that we've had with Northeastern have been some type of form of negotiation, and I just want to clarify that that's not the case at this point. This is a checkpoint in the process of communicating with Northeastern about their plans. This isn't a decision point, there's not going to be any vote on Tuesday. That being said, the community is encouraged to attend the meeting and hear what Northeastern has to say, and there will be, hopefully, an hour and 15 minutes, maybe a little bit more, depending on how quickly they get through their presentation, for community comments. I will say that, you know, logistically, I understand that the last time Northeastern presented here in the Town Hall, logistics of that presentation were a bit poor. This time, they're planned better, they're going to have a large projection screen here on the stage, they're going to have two screens on the side of the hall halfway back. So the visuals will be a lot more easier to see for those in the Town Hall, and also they'll be plugging into, hopefully plugging into our AV equipment, so that folks at home who are watching the presentation can follow along. If not, I'm going to be asking them to provide us their PowerPoint, so we can upload it onto the website that night, so folks can download it while they're watching the meeting. We'll also, we do expect there to be a large number of folks to come into the building, so we're going to try and fit as many seating, as many seats in here as possible, we're going to reserve some seats in the front for handicap folks, and we're going to try to make sure that everybody can see and hear the presentation. They will be bringing in a 3D model of their proposals, and they'll be videoing that as well, so people can see them interact with that model up on the big screen. For those folks that can't attend, or would prefer to be at home to watch on TV, we are hoping to have some form of tool to provide the residents of Nahat a way to give feedback to us, the board, and myself, that we'll hopefully have hard copies of, and also have on our website as well. And, of course, you know, outside of that tool, folks can email me at abarletta@nahat.org, any type of comments that they have as well. And lastly, I'll say that there was a lot of requests that came in, I don't know if you guys saw it, but about materials, briefing materials, being delivered ahead of the meeting, and Northeastern did put together a one-page memo of some sort, that they told me should be hitting mailboxes either tomorrow or Saturday. So folks will have some sort of idea, conceptual idea, of what they're going to be walking into ahead of time. You know, I just, that's, that's all I want to say, is that we're trying, we're doing our best, we expect that there's going to be a lot of folks here, we're doing our best to try and make as much room for people as possible, we're trying to provide a way for people to watch at home, in case, in case the room gets over full. It's important to note, like you said, it's not a town meeting, there is no vote being taken place, there is no decision, this is just a point in the process where Northeastern's going to present where they are, and then we're going to get feedback from the community and continue.
For the town, we have been meeting with Northeastern, a lot of which went with chairman, and town administrator, and lawyers. At some point, maybe three weeks, a month ago-ish, I said to them, well, this is good, because we've been pushing, talking, pushing, we said, the public needs to see, the public needs to see this, because they want to know. And they were like, well, we could do it this and that, and I said, this Thanksgiving, this Christmas, we have to do it after Thanksgiving, but not too close to Christmas, so I said to them December 11th, like I knew what I was saying, and December 11th rang a bell nicely with all the calendars, so that's why we decided December 11th. This week would have been a little hectic, I think. So, this is what we've decided to do, it's informational meeting, there's one item on the agenda, and that's Northeastern presentation. After that, I will get up and have people talk. Obviously, you have a lot of people to ask questions, and they should be allowed to ask questions. I'm not going to, I'm going to not allow screaming and yelling, it's not happening. The last five meetings I've been to, it's been that way, and, and I'm sorry, but it's not going to happen. Not when I'm chair, this is my meeting, if it gets carried away, I'll cancel the meeting. The main focus of this meeting is for Northeastern to make a presentation. Everyone absorbs that. People get up and they're angry, or they're not angry, of course you are, it's Nahat, I don't mind, I don't have a say anyway. But I'm not allowing it, and I'm telling you right now, it's not happening. It's civility, we all discussed, discussed this about two months ago, and I'm very happy it's been a good, very, very civil time for me as chairman, and I want to keep it that way. So, let's try to remember that, it's going to be a lot of people here, let's listen to what they're saying, believe me, this is not over, as far as I'm concerned, it's not over. That's why I want us three to sort of, I have, I am going to run a meeting that's going to be civil, I promise you that. You who, Nahat, I promise. But I think we should slip out of the way, because we are not, we are not the meeting. One item, Northeastern, they finish, question and answer. Equal questions, equal answers, I don't know how to do it yet, but it's not going to be, it's going to be civil. So, I've said enough. Onto Citizens Forum.
Oh, wait a minute, can I, I'd like to say something.
Oh, let Mr. Lombard first, Jen. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure everyone realizes, the presentation that the Selectmen had was on an individual basis, and there's been no deal struck in any way with the Board of Selectmen or the Town Administrator. We listened to their presentation, and you're going to listen to it on the 11th. That's the fact, there's nothing been struck, people come to me, we made a deal, you know, and there's no deal made, there's nothing of that sort, no approvals, nothing was given to them. So, I just want to, as I heard someone call me and tell me that the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator made a deal, no such deal has happened. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree with Richie and T., you're going to see exactly what we saw, and no more.
Go ahead, absolutely, go ahead.
If you should decide to sell to the highest bidder, what would the highest bidder be able to do about it?
The highest bidder of Northeast, that area?
Yeah, if they decide to sell.
Right.
To the highest bidder, because of these problems.
Well, I don't.
What would the highest bidder be able to do about it?
Polly, I think, you know, that would be step 20. We're still on step one. They're, they're going to present to us, and present to the town, the new change, and the new changes that they made, and that's where we stand. I don't think any, there's no such thing as a highest bidder going to go in for Northeastern, I, I don't believe so.
I don't think that they would do it, but I think that they, that question could be answered perhaps on Tuesday.
Well, I, I believe if they.
It's very important to the future of the town.
Oh yes. I believe, I believe if something like that happened, I believe we have the right of first refusal on that property, and I think we would fight like hell to make sure that if something like that, or they move out, we take it back, and we'd go to court for that. I imagine, I'm speaking for myself, but that, no, that property's not going to be going out to the highest bidder, or Boston University, or Boston College, or, you know, who knows? I mean, you know.
That land was given to Northeastern, because, because the next step 50 years ago would have been to sell to the highest bidder, and at that time, they could probably have built high-rise apartments. We look like we owe a lot to Northeastern. Just that I raised the issue, and maybe they can answer it on Tuesday.
No, but that's something we will talk to them about, too, when we meet with them. One of us will bring it up when we meet separately, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Jennifer McCarthy, 19 Range Road. I have two public events happening that I just wanted to share. First of all, this Saturday is the Nahat Village Church Fair from 9 to 2. We have a bake sale, jewelry table, snack bar with lobster rolls and clam chowder, Mrs. Claus is coming on the fire truck at 11 o'clock, so she'll be there. And then my second event is the Santa Parade, Tides fundraiser, that Roz runs, I'm helping her sell some sweatshirts and t-shirts. But that's next Saturday night on September 15th. Roz is still looking for some raffle prize donations, so if anybody at home has a business, or has tickets to anything that they would like to donate, they can call Roz at the police station, 581-1212, she's there every day, from I think like 9 to 4, or 8 to 4. And just so people know, the money that she raises goes to scholarships for high school seniors who want to continue their education, and so the Santa Parade donates money to all the kids who apply, so that's a good cause. Now, two thoughts I've had. As we talk about Citizens Forum, and town meeting, and everything coming up, I'd like the board to consider placing time limits on people when they speak. This is a common practice in many other communities, it does make it fair for everybody if they know that they have maybe four or five minutes to speak. I know over in Swambscott, I think it's a five-minute limit, and at about three and a half minutes, the person gets a signal that, you know, they have about a minute to wrap it up. I know in this town, we have many passionate people who have a lot to say, they're very knowledgeable, but I think it would be fair if everybody had an equal opportunity at the mic. And then the other thought I had, a couple of weeks ago in the paper, it said that the Chevrolet site across from North Shore Community College was sold, and they were going to build apartment buildings there. And, I might have my numbers, okay. 322 apartment buildings are scheduled to go in there. The Port Hole Pub sold a few months ago, 55 apartment buildings are going in there. Building 19, the Linway Mart there, that sold, 550 apartment buildings are scheduled to go in there. And I can't find the numbers for Christie's, right around the Rotary, but I heard that there was some type of apartment buildings going in there as well. If you do the math, without the Christie's numbers, that's 927 apartment buildings going up along the Linway, plus Gorillic Farms has been sold, and so who knows what will end up there. That's almost, if you figure, every apartment has one car, some people have two cars, we're looking at about 1,400 additional cars on the Linway. This will have a huge impact on Nahat, and so, I know we don't, you know, own Lin, we can't tell them what to do, but I think it would be in Nahat's best interest if we started to talk to Lin a little bit, and say, you know, what are your plans for traffic on the Linway? And maybe we could have somebody from Nahat sit with them and talk about it, because that whole area right now is already a huge cluster. You know, just to get out of town on a weekday, or get back into town, takes an additional 20 minutes. Now, if you're adding 1,400 more cars, it's, it's just going to be a nightmare. So, that was just a thought I had, and I think it's something that we should be aware of as a community, it will have a great impact on us. Thank you.
We're ahead of you on this. We've got the numbers, and the board, and with the Town Administrator, we're looking at the various numbers, and we're talking to DCR on the traffic patterns, especially the Rotary at the end of the causeway, that's going to be, it's going to be a mess, especially the traffic from Swambscott to Marblehead as well. So, it's absolutely, there's no question in my mind, you've got numbers very similar, and you know, you're looking at quite a few vehicles on the Linway. There's going to be a lot more lights, there might be a light at the Rotary, and that Rotary taken out completely. So, you, we're aware of it, we're looking at it, and Tommy McGee's a good friend of the town, and he'll help us as much as he can, believe me. But again, these properties, especially the apartments and condos going in, it's just, there's nothing you can do, I mean, the, they're going to break ground on the Beacon Chevrolet property next week, and that's one of the big, and then the Port Hole, and then it plus Christie's, there's no question. And if you can see the buildings in Revere Beach, as there is now, we go to the airport, it just, it's, the traffic's going to be overwhelming. And plus the casino, once that's that, that Route 1A is going to be jammed, so we're going to have to, people, I think it's in their minds, and it's on our minds, and I'm not sure exactly what we can do, but we can ask for a plan. From DCR, on exactly how they're going to handle the traffic, especially the ones at the Linway and Market Street, that, coming in that area, and, you know, getting down the Lynchure Drive, and then the, all the way to the Boston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a nice Christmas, everybody.
Same to you. Just on me first, evidently, I have to speak again, and no offense to Jen, but this is not a town meeting, it's a Selectmen's meeting, and I am absolutely going to have time limits, and I'm not going to have 17 people get up in a row for it, or 17 people up in a row against it, or, we're going to try to make it fair. I know that's a big thing, but to me it is. So it's a, as a Selectman, these guys, it's still my meeting, I learned that with Mr. Barrow last year, it's the chairman's meeting. If times, if things get rough, as I said before, I will just close the meeting, I will adjourn it. It's my prerogative.
T, I just wanted to say, I wasn't necessarily talking about Tuesday, just going forward, even at town meeting, I know sometimes there's several people who get up and talk for a very long time, so I think it would be a good practice. I know there are some rules in, I don't think it's Robert rules, but maybe town meeting rules or something, as to setting time limits, so just looking ahead and going forward, maybe setting up some type of.
I've got to correct you, it's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen would give the timeline, but if someone's too long.
I understand.
For the Selectmen's meeting, the town meeting, the town administrators are responsible for that.
But, timeline, they would be good, too. Well.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that the, I had talked to Tony McGee and Brendan Crichton about the traffic situation, and most of the traffic congestion is not the Linway, it's Lynchure Drive, that's where the problem starts, so, you know, the Linway is pretty wide, I mean, and if we didn't have that, the Lynchure Drive, and the issues over there, I think the congestion would probably go away. Because I, I tried, I drove down there several times for football, as Tony would know, back in the day, and I can tell you that, that's, that's mostly where it starts. But we have, we are, they are looking into it, a state senator and the mayor Lynn, so... But we have, we are, they are looking into it, our state senator and the mayor Lynn, so we're working with them.
And, and our new rep, Pete Capano as well, is on the top of his list. And just to throw another plug in there for Mayor McGee, he was formerly chairman of the Transportation Committee on the Senate, and, you know, led the, led the charge on getting the ferry, and I know has always been pushing for a Blue Line extension too. So it's definitely on the top of his list in the regions.
Thank you, everyone. New business. Approve Nahant Cultural Council Christmas concert. Say that fast three times. December sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, four to six.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve the Nahant Cultural Council Christmas concert on December sixteen, two thousand eighteen, from four PM to six PM at the Town Hall. I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
I will second. Discussion. Singing and hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Approve Santa Parade, December twenty-second, six PM.
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Santa Parade, December twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at six PM kickoff at forty steps. Second the motion.
Further discussion. Singing and hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Approve Johnson Elementary School Winter Concert, December nineteenth.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Johnson School, Johnson Elementary School Winter Concert on the seven nineteenth, at seven PM at the Town Hall.
Second.
Further discussion.
It's a great take.
Oh, it is?
You have to go.
All three of them are great takes.
Yeah, they are.
Singing and hearing none?
No more.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Town Administrator Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I just wanted to mention that I didn't have on the, on the agenda here was the Christmas tree lighting the other day out front of the Town Hall was a great event. Ton of folks, a ton of folks from the town, a ton of kids came, came out, and it was a beautiful night. It was a great opportunity to get together with the community, and it was a great event. So just wanted to-
It was, it was a good time. That, what group put that on oh one nine oh eight?
Yes.
They did a great job.
Mm-hmm.
Great job. Should send them a letter too, you know.
Well, they, they always do.
They already do. I know they know it. It doesn't matter.
I was shocked that the, that the prices went up when I walked over to the table, though. Prices for what? Put them up for you, though.
I got mine off price.
Well, they're trying to, this is, this is for charity, you know.
Another thing I have on here is the MVP Committee, the Municipal Vulnerability Program, has a statement that they asked me to read tonight. And the Municipal Vulnerability Program, or MVP, it's a state program that offers grants to help prepare communities for climate change and sea level rise. To be eligible for large grants, the town first has to hold an MVP workshop that will help the town prioritize, prioritize critical issues and plan grants. Last March, the Nahant MVP Committee obtained a small grant to hold the workshop for about thirty key stakeholders in town. However, they would like some feedback from the larger community, and so they've started a survey that will run for the month of December. You can take the survey online or find paper copies at key locations around town, like the library, here at the Town Hall, Dunkin' Donuts, Police Station, and the Golf Course. In January, the MVP Committee will present the results of the survey to the public, and there will be a chance for people to give more input. In February, they will hold the MVP Workshop with key stakeholders, police, fire, DPW, town committees, to develop a plan of action. In March and April, a consultant will help them write a plan based on input from the survey and the workshop. And they will have a public meeting where people are informed about the plan and be able to give more input again. This plan will be used to prioritize grants and prepare Nahant for sea level rise. Suckman Burrell was a huge influence on this, on the community becoming an MVP-designated community. And Abby, the Chairwoman now, is doing a great job. And this is a very important program for the town. And this survey is the first step in many steps of this process. And it's important that folks know that that workshop is of those thirty key stakeholders. So your opportunity to provide input beforehand is by using this survey. So it's on the town website, it's right in the, in the banner on the homepage, it's on the MVP Committee page. And we'll push this out on our Town Hall Facebook as well. But they are eager to hear from folks in town about vulnerable areas around the community. So if you're in Little Nahant, if you're in Bass Point, you know, Lowlands, Willow Road, anywhere, you know, it's important to provide as much feedback to the stakeholders as possible so that they have that information going into that workshop.
And on MVP, you have quite a bit of experience with that also, from your former background, correct? That you, we could, they could lean on you also.
I'm, I'm helping them out, but I, I don't wanna take any of their credit. They're doing, and Chairman, and Selectman Burrell, they've been doing all the work. They've done all the heavy lifting on this, and there's a long way to go. But these grants could be a huge help. Actually, it's a good segue into the next topic, but it could be a huge help to the town as we prepare for climate change and invest in some infrastructure that could help us do that.
Thank you.
I have one thing.
Sure.
Tony, I had one suggestion. The police department, Chief Twyler, they have a high-definition camera. We need, the tides, if you noticed, the tides have been running extremely high this past week. Take, it takes some pictures of like Tudor Beach, the wharf, I mean, the water came up just, just about a, two feet below the, the building in the, the wharf, and Shark Beach, and Doggy Beach in that area there, where the flooding's occurring. These are the areas that we have, you know, put a presentation together with a, on a billboard, take pictures of exactly, identify each area, and especially when the high tide comes in. And if they catch the waves hitting and coming over, you know, would be great. Especially the flooding, you know, on Castle Road, Foxer Road, White Way, Willow Road. These are the areas that are prone to flooding, you know. That would be good, especially if they have, you know, the camera, and that'd be very helpful. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Gino's actually on the committee, Officer Speltis, so he's actually been volunteering his time on the committee as well, and I'm sure he'd be happy to help out in that way.
I think the chief would give him the camera.
The next part on my report is to talk about budget development strategy. So I have a, I've provided you each a worksheet with some estimated dollar values on it. So I'd like to take this opportunity to talk to you about this year's budget process and seek your approval and direction for our development strategy. Balancing the budget this year is going to be more challenging than ever. And compared to previous years, it's gonna be challenging due to a number of factors. Last year, our budget was balanced with over a million dollars of free cash and overlay surplus. And we didn't put any money into a stabilization fund or OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. And it's important to know that by not putting that money aside into stabilization or OPEB, we're jeopardizing the town's bond rating. And if our bond rating goes down, the interest rate on our borrowing goes up, and our debt increases. The Division of Local Services of DOR actually noted this in their review of our financial operations back in July of two thousand and fifteen, and made a number of recommendations that I've been reading about and considering for this, this year or future years to help the town. Outside of this issue of not putting money aside, we're estimating that we will have approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less this year in free cash, and fifty thousand dollars less in overlay surplus compared to last year. If you look at the rough estimates on the sheet in front of you, that's a total of approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less available to us to balance the budget compared to last year. We also know that our expenditures will likely increase due to the estimated one point six million dollars in storm damage from last year's storms. And FEMA will only reimburse the town up to seventy-five percent. That means that we will have to pay approximately four hundred thousand dollars. And that is an estimate. And as you know, Tudor Beach came in at about a hundred thousand dollars over what we estimated. So really, to me, that twenty-five percent is somewhere in the range of four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. We may also see an increase in the school special education budget next year of about a hundred thousand dollars. So the point I'm trying to make is that it's going to be near impossible to balance the budget this year without making cuts, unless we consider some type of general override. I'm also looking for your, for your, the board's capital plan priorities, cause I'm in the process of gathering that information from our department heads. And together with their requests and your priorities, that'll help me determine what we're gonna apply for CPC funds and what we might need to borrow for, and how much. My thought is that a small general override, equal to the amount of the twenty-five percent that we owe for the storm damage repairs, would allow us to pay that debt in year one, and put us on a path towards a healthy and stable balance budget, plus protect our bond rating moving forward. I don't have the figures yet for the average homeowner's bill impact caused by this potential override. However, I would note that Nahant has one of the lowest tax rates in the Commonwealth, and the intent of this approach is to keep Nahant at the lower end of those rankings. It's a tough, it's a tough thing to bring up, especially in my, you know, I've only been here for a few months. And the last thing I wanna bring to the table is to talk about increasing taxes. But, you know, Nahant doesn't have any new growth, and our tax rate is, is quite low. And as I mentioned, our expenditures are increasing because of storm damage, and our free cash and overlay surplus has decreased compared to last year. So what I'm hoping to do next is to talk to each, each of you individually over the next couple of weeks about our budget development. But I want, what I'd like to know from you, the board, is if you're comfortable with this approach that would feature the development of two budgets, one with a small override and one without.
Okay. Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
All right. I, well, first of all, Tony, none of this is your fault.
Okay.
No, you walked into it.
You walked into it, that's right. This has been growing for some time now, and people have to realize it. And we did have a major sewer break that people forget about, and this is what we should be paying attention to. We did have a major storm last year, and God only knows if we're gonna have another one this year, that wiped out a seawall. And by the way, does this, does this include the Little Nahant walls too, Fallon Way? Okay, good. I wanna make sure everything is covered. In saying that, and we're not putting any money into OPEB. We haven't done that in a while. And that is absolutely, we've been warned, it's crazy, that we do that, that we don't take care of that, and our stabilization fund also. The other thing I would ask is to have the Coast Guard Housing Committee come back with us with a report. We need to get on that, because that bond's gonna come due, you know, I, I, I know that they say that it's another four or five years down the road, but don't forget that fiscal year is a year ahead of time, and we've been saying that now for three or four years. Am I right? It's, yes, but it's two thousand twenty-five for the bond. Right, but that's, that's not too far away. So we need to make sure that we get the best bang for the buck with that, and have them come back with a plan this year, so we know what we're gonna do with it, and how we're gonna get, what we're gonna get out of it.
But, may I for a second?
Yeah.
Plus, it's important for me, because if we're going to go for an override, we need to know from them, the Coast Guard Housing, what's happening.
Right.
This whole town needs to know. The last I heard was six plans, and I heard that from Mr. Lombard. No offense. But, you know, we need them here to, to talk to the whole town, cause that's a big part of-
It is, it is, it's a big factor. It's, you know, unfortunately, our infrastructure is aging all at the same rate. And we're, we're kinda hitting this perfect storm of issues. No pun intended, you know, along with the storm damage that we got hit with last year. And so it's all coming to, it's all coming to head at the same time, and I wanna repeat, you know, the intent of this is not a, we're not talking millions-of-dollar override here. And the last thing I wanna do is skyrocket us as a town to the halfway or to the top end of those rankings as far as tax rate goes compared to other-
I wasn't quite finished, so.
Oh.
It needs to be done, and, and there's no dispute about that. And, and we have to be very careful how we do it, and, and pay this stuff down, and, you know. And I've asked Deb Waters for all, everybody's budget. I wanna see everybody's budget, and I wanna see where I can come up with some ideas to cut some of the fat out of the, you know, I wanna see every line item. I wanna see where they're spending their money, where, you know, where is it all going? Because I'm sure there's areas where we can cut there too.
Suggestion, that if you do that, we discuss it here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. But I wanna see it. I mean, you know, as a selectman, we should, we should see this stuff.
So, you know, just reiterate, you know, even if we were to borrow to pay the twenty-five percent of the storm damage, we're still looking at two to three hundred thousand dollar gap there of cuts that we would need to find. Plus, we're just, we're adding that five hun, you know, four to six hundred thousand dollars to our debt that we're gonna have to pay back with interest, which, so long as we're not putting money into OPEB and stabilization, our bond rating could decrease, and now we're paying even more interest on those borrowings. So it's a, we're at a pivotal point here to make a decision. And that's why I think, you know, maybe we come up with two budgets to show what, you know, what the option is.
I've looked at other communities' budgets, and Nahant borrows a lot more than in most communities. And I think that's, you know, a bad habit. And we've been warned not to keep doing that. So I think it's a good idea that we get this out in the open, and people know what we're up against, and we figure it out.
Okay, so could you repeat specifically what you would like to see the override be for? To cover?
He don't, he doesn't know yet. He's gotta get ready for the department head's numbers.
Right, what I'm, what I'm looking for is some direction from the board as to how to begin developing our budget. And should we be doing that with a potential plan for an override? Or without, and be looking at cuts, or be doing both at the same time to show what we have to choose between?
We sit down with-
Can I, excuse me, can, is it, are you finished?
Not quite.
Well, go ahead, finish.
We sit down with every, every, every department head, you know, you can, we can. And then we can develop the budget with them, cut some fat, and, you know, in areas that we can. And then, you know, work with the FinCom. They're a great resource, and I've always worked with them. I go to their meetings. I think it's important that we do that, and we go from there. I mean, that's just what we're gonna have to do. I mean, that's just what we're going to have to do, and it's, it's just reality. So, and I'm all for working behind, with you, Tony, and getting this done and developing it, absolutely. The direction would, my direction would be, let's sit down with all these department heads and get it now, do it now, not later, now, because April's right around the corner.
So from us, you want an okay to begin the process of?
Are you, is the board comfortable with exploring the idea of a small general override to the tune of the 25%? I would, that would be my suggestion.
That's what I just asked you to explain, though. This is, this, if we under, if we can get it out there, that are we willing to support an override of 25% to?
Well, we don't know 100, we don't know exactly what that dollar amount is yet, but I estimate that 25% to be at somewhere between $400,000 and $600,000.
Okay, but that's what I'm looking for so we can throw to the town. I'm in favor of pursuing that.
So am I. And, and the reason why I say that is because to pay it down, to get rid of it, to pay this, the damages that has been done, pay it off with a clean slate because you've got to remember, we're looking at infrastructure, water and sewer. We're going to be borrowing for that. So, you know, clean the slate before you start up with something else.
And just to be clear, my recommendation is a general override. So year one, that dollar amount would pay the debt of that 25%.
Right.
Year two and going forward, that dollar amount would be used to help put money in the stabilization and OPEB and balance our budget so that we're able to borrow at a healthy rate to fix our capital needs.
But the, to me, by asking the questions that way, this is, these are the specifics I wanted to hear so the town could hear, so we can keep pressing on those. I, I think it's a good avenue.
Do you need to agree with, I'm sorry.
Whenever you guys are ready. I'll be ready. Tony, I'm definitely in favor of an override, and I think you need to work backwards. I would take the April town meeting, the end of April, work backwards from there. So the override would be a February and March override, so we have numbers for the town meeting. Okay? That's number one. And don't forget, you know, we only gave out 1% salary increases to the unions and the schools as well. So we've got to make sure, you've got to add in the superintendent's screw and see what exactly his numbers are and get some confirmed numbers, especially, we just, we can't continue giving 1% raises to our town employees. We, we cannot forget them. They're the backbone of this town. So I want to make sure of that. But I, I'd start from April and work backwards and see what the, the date sequence is. Maybe we can have, if, if we're all ready to go, this is what December 15th, what is it, 10th, whatever the date is.
Today's the 5th, 6th.
The 5th.
Today's the 6th.
Well, you've got, I, you know, I would put it on no later than I, I would get the override done by the end of February before that. So get all the numbers and so, so that we have 30 days or somewhere in March, just to have the override done so we have a, a sound budget, okay, for, for the April town meeting. Okay? So you have a sound budget. I would look at, at the, the 3% being charged, do a, you know, the 3% from the CPC. And I think you need to start looking at that. And those articles, if they want, somebody, if they want to put articles on, they can stand alone on those articles alone, but I take away the 3%, so you've got a, a good start, you know. 3% off the people's taxes is going to be huge, especially if you're going to go for an override. That's my input and suggestion, but I'm definitely, you, we definitely need it, there's no question in my mind, and I think it's to be at one time. And we can defend it on the town hall floor. We can defend it and, you know, and get prepared. People, you know, they, they realize the tax rate and tax base over here is just very low. So they know that, you know, that it's been, it's been great, but, you know, things are starting, we got a lot, a lot of projects on the, on the thing, but, and we can look at the budgets and everything else and look at the, you know, I, the department heads do a great job. And I, you know, they're really, they're close to the vest, but salaries is, is going to be a key thing going forward. Okay? That's all I have.
I can add, having six years on the school committee, that every year sped costs could skyrocket, they can go all over the place. Anyone in education can tell you that. You get one sped student or someone, and you're talking 50, 60, 70,000, who knows what now? So I mean, I could see that jumping up.
A hundred.
Hit the town too. And the CPC has been, I've been approached on that quite a few times, more or less to suspend it is what I ask, what, what I'm hearing out there from my constituents to just to suspend it because of the budget crisis. So I mean, that's something to think about too, Richie. That's not a bad thought, to at least talk about it.
Absolutely. It's 3%, you know, right out of the box, and you're, you're going to need 3%. It's just going to be a.
Something we can think about.
You know, you're, and we, we're not going to, you know, this is not going to be an annual thing, have an override every year. I would, I, I'd go down and, and then I would make a five-year plan on, based on that, you know, the numbers, and take a look at things, you know.
Yep. Okay.
I'm going to try to get Northeastern to pay for a lot, but we haven't got that number yet.
Are you set with?
I'm all set.
County Minister report, all of us?
I am, yeah.
Ongoing business, anybody?
Yeah, I would like to, I've been getting some complaints, trash complaints, especially from Little Nahat, where they haven't been picking up the trash. And a couple of years ago, we brought them in, and according to them, they were less than a half a percent of complaint rate. One of my constituents has said that they, they called, they sent a letter to them or, you know, that they did the online thing. They were apologized to, and they would be right out the next, the next day, and they never showed up. Now, I don't know if they've gone up there and collected it this week, but it's, it's been an ongoing problem. The other thing is, people have to understand, they can't be bringing trash in from other communities because they are doing that in one area of town where there, there was probably 20 or 30 bags, construction bags, every week that are put out, and that has to come to a halt. They cannot be bringing in trash from other communities to be picked up by the town of Nahat. I don't think one house every week should be putting out 20 Home Depot, you know, the, the construction bags out every week. We need to deal with that, and I think we've talked about that. We need to take care of that. The other thing is, I'd like to see if we can have some kind of reprieve for people somewhere along the line, especially in the wintertime, people that are pumping their houses out into the street. It's creating a huge problem in town. One, at, at the bottom of my street, Sunset Road, I mean, it's a sheet of ice. And I've asked the DPW, I asked Mary the other day to get the DPW down there to, to salt it in, in Little Nahat, and how it, how it came across it was one of, another constituent from Little Nahat come over and said Wilson Road is a sheet of ice because they're, they're pumping, and they have no other choice. I mean, we need to, they need to have an answer, where they can pump this water to, into a storm drain or somewhere without putting it into the street. We have to, we have to figure something out for them. We have to help them because they're taxpayers, and we just need to do that. But they shouldn't be putting it to the street because it's a dangerous, it's a, it's a dangerous thing for everybody, especially in the wintertime where it just turns to ice. So, and I want to thank the DPW for going out there and doing that. They, they put the salt down right away. But it only takes once where if you're coming down a hill and some little kid's walking across that street and you slide into him, that would be the end of it. So need to take a look at that.
I, I happen to agree with you. I see the areas, I see the, it's the same areas, it's the same houses pumping it out. It happens on Willow Road as well. And I think what we need to do is, we can't, I don't think we can fix it this winter, but we need to get the police department checking those areas and have them call out or have the public works check it every morning during the week, these areas that are pumping and it's freezing, so they can put sand and salt down. So prevent any, any tragedy.
Yes.
Right, that's the first thing. I don't think, it's going to take us, you know, a few months to identify the houses that are pumping out.
Yeah.
Create the list and then notify them that we've got a, working on a condition, something to help them, you know, because I don't know where their cellars are flooded, the water tables being, especially in my area, you know, it's coming down Ocean Street, there's a, there's a stream running down from up across the country club, and it's coming down, it's affecting those properties. And there's a lot of water selling in these homes, and they, you know, it's, they pump it out because they have pumps in there, and they have to, you know, we have to, you know, identify those people that are using, it's the same ones that are flooding these streets. And then have them, I don't know what we can do or how they can tie that into. I, it's going to be diff, it's, it's not an easy question.
Well, again, and I just.
It's not an easy fixie as well.
And I forgot to mention this, I'm, the 10th, Monday, the 10th, I will be meeting all day with FEMA and the ISO, the insurance people to, we are in the community rating system, even though some people don't think we are, we are. I got us into it some time ago. And I'm going to be meeting with them on Monday to go over this stuff. And, you know, part of it is a plan. We need to have a strategic plan for storm, stormwater and where does it go and how do we get rid of it and all that. And we'll be showing them that, what we have for a plan. And we'll also be showing them our stormwater bylaw that we have in place that was adopted in 2015. So I'll be here all day Monday doing that.
I didn't see that on the agenda. Is that on the agenda as a meeting for the board? I mean, is that just, are you, no? So this is the 10th?
Monday, 10th, I think.
So are you, but who's going, who's going to the meeting? Or just you?
It's me, I, it's part of my FEMA stuff.
It's part of the FEMA stuff.
It's, it's the last part of my, it took me, you know.
Oh, okay.
It's the last part of it. After changing the map, I decided to get us into the.
Okay.
It's to lower everybody's insurance rates, and, you know, there are people that have to have flood insurance, so even if it's 5%, it's, it's something, you know? And then we can work on even more. They'll come in and let us know exactly where we stand. We're in it, you know, and we have to have this visit before the end of the year, so I'm going to do it. I'm just going to finish it, get it done, so.
Okay. My two cents was, I, I agree with both these gentlemen, we have to do something about this water. If you down Castle Road, I go down out every day that I go to work, it's a sheet of ice or it melts, and it's water, and next day it's ice. Today it was ice. Traffic coming this way and you're going down, you go to hit the brakes, you're going to go either into a house or right into that car. And I, three town administrators ago, I asked that something be done about it, and it's time we do something now that we have you. More work for you, Mr. Town Administrator, but we'll work together on this. Thank you. Closing announcements. Oh, any other business?
There are none.
No. The winter parking ban goes into effect December 21st to March 20th. I will not mention the blue lights that could go up, never mind. Compost area will be closed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with that blue light being put in.
I know, I know. You said that last year, and I appreciate it.
If you want a motion that we check into it, I don't know what the cost is involved in it, but at the entrance of Carsway, you know, the, you know, the interest in the town?
If possible, I'd like to do that for next year because we made a motion.
No, I understand. Okay.
Three town administrators ago said he'd take care of it and didn't.
Well, I think we've got a.
So now, let's not make a motion because he's busy.
We, well, he is, he is extremely busy. The poor guy is, you know, going to school and, congratulations on passing all your exams, by the way. You didn't mention that. He's done a great job. He's been going to purchasing school for the last three weeks, four weeks.
Was the test multiple choice?
No, no, no. It was, you had to write an essay, so.
We made him smile.
Yeah.
Okay. But, Mr. Lombard, thank you for the support. I think something for next year.
Well, I want to give you some support, at least, you know, one of us give you some support.
I hear you. The compost area will be closing for the season on December 15th. Okay? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Eight, nine, nine past eight.